SAFE Alliance is Austin's leading organization helping survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault and trafficking escape abuse and rebuild their lives. Right now in Austin, 88 people are waiting for SAFE's emergency shelter. Nearly 40 of them are children. If every person in the Austin metro gained just $1 a month, it would house 1,000 people every night. So start your monthly gift today at safeaustin.org/citycastgives. That's S-A-F-E-A-U-S-T-I-N dot org slash citycastgives. $1, huge impact.
Today on City Cast Austin, y'all, we finally have a budget. In the aftermath of Prop Q's overwhelming failure, Austin City Council members had to quickly come up with a new one. So what made it into the final version? I'm here with a guest to find out. It's Tuesday, December 2nd. I'm Eva Ruth Moravec in for Nikki Devon, and this is what Austin's talking about. Hello, I'm here today with Amy Stansberry, the editor in chief for Austin Common. Welcome back, Amy.
Hi, good to be back. Still talking about the budget all these months later.
Yes, if you've had deja vu for months, it's just all of us. So but finally, we are past the hump. We have a budget. Why was making it $100 million smaller that hard for Austin City Council? It took so long for them to get this all figured out. Why was it that challenging for Austin City Council?
So I think like one thing, there was a lot of headlines about the city cutting $100 million from its budget, which is like both true and not true.
Right, yes.
Just to explain really quick, you know, back in July, city manager, he releases his draft budget. He has to do that every year, and it's a balanced budget. Then, but it does have some cuts in it and is kind of signaling that larger cuts will come down the road to social services especially. So city council is worried about those looming cuts, and it sees a need for more spending around homelessness and parks in particular. And so it decides to pass a different budget. You know, they edit the city manager's budget and add 110 million more dollars in spending, which goes over that tax cap, so we have to have Prop Q.
Which I remember, I do remember at the time, there were reporters who said, okay, wait, but what happens if Prop Q doesn't pass? And this budget, you know, we're screwed because y'all are basing everything on this budget that relies on that voter approval. And it didn't happen.
Yeah, and so, you know, voters reject Prop Q, and so city council has to come back and pass a new budget again. So they have, though, as a starting place, that city manager's originally proposed budget, sometimes they called that the base budget, all the way back from July. And so, yes, they had to cut 110 million dollars from like what they passed in August.
Their play budget.
Yeah, exactly, their expanded budget. But it wasn't $110 million of cuts to programs we already have. You know, some of that included not expanding services the way they had envisioned. Now, there were certainly cuts, but not $110 million of like cuts to existing programs, right? They just had to claw back a lot of that new homelessness spending, for example, is just not included in the budget. So that was a big piece of it. And actually, I know it seems like crazy to say, but they passed this new budget pretty quickly, given how long they usually take.
Relatively.
Yes, it just a few weeks, really, they put together this new budget, which is kind of a combination of what the city manager originally proposed. And then there were a few things that were going to be funded by Prop Q that city council really held out as like top priorities and sort of signaled to city staff and the city manager, come back to us with a new proposed budget that's very similar to what you originally had, but has a few of these key things from Prop Q that we just like really, really don't want to let go. And some of those included things like allowing our EM cot services to continue 24/7 or to run 24/7. So this is mental health first response in the field services. So we literally have folks, you know, if someone's experiencing a mental health crisis, trained mental health professionals go out to them. And right now, that service doesn't operate 24/7, so city council really wanted that to operate 24/7. So that was like one of the things they were like, make sure this is in the budget, even if we have to cut something else, we want this in there. There were also a few homelessness top, top priorities that got put in there and parks maintenance, some parks maintenance. So that's sort of how they started to go through this process.
I mean, we're still talking about billions of dollars. So I guess when you're looking at like 100 million, it's like, okay, like in the grand scheme of things, why was there all this hand wringing about it? Just tighten it up a little.
I think the big thing is to think about too, is that yes, we have a $6.3 billion budget, but really, we have like a $1.5 billion budget. That's the general fund. That is the portion of the budget that is funded by property taxes and sales taxes and is like taxpayer subsidized and is where like more of our quote unquote discretionary spending lies. The rest of the budget is like Austin Energy, Austin Water, Austin Resource Recovery. The city calls these enterprise departments because basically they earn the money that they spend.
Okay.
So there's less debate, when we're talking like this whole redoing of the budget that we just did in November, we didn't even touch, they did not touch the enterprise departments, really.
So that was really just the 1.5 billion?
Yeah, that's really where a lot of the debate comes into play because those rely on these like subsidies by us as taxpayers, where of course, as taxpayers, we are paying like Austin Energy and Austin Water, but that's through like the fees we pay. So it still is a big number, but it's less than that 6.3.
Fine, so let's go back to election night. We did hear a lot from city council members, most of them were pushing for Prop Q to get passed, saying like, we really need this Prop Q funding in order to keep the services that you're used to having going. I think there was just one council member, Mark Dushin, who was against the Prop Q essentially. And then, you know, voters resoundingly said, no, we're not interested in giving more tax money for all these services that you say that we need. We're not sure about all that. What do you think that council learned and took away from the results of election night this year?
Yeah, I mean, they definitely seemed to hear that affordability is super important. I heard a lot from a lot of council members, I interviewed a few council members, and that was kind of what they resoundingly said is they felt like they heard from voters that they just cannot afford any more property tax increases, even if the programs sound nice. Like, you know what I mean? Like, you know, there were, I think there were a few different camps of folks. One large group, I think, were people who are like, those programs sound nice, but I can't afford $300 more on my property tax bill. It's just like, everything else is rising, everything's getting more expensive, and so I just can't.
Yeah.
And then there's like the other camp that's more like, well, I'm not so sure we should be spending money on these services at all, or I don't trust the way the city is currently spending its money. I think that's kind of like the buckets. And so the city council seemed to echo that on the diet slot, talking about how affordability is important and also trying to figure out ways, it seems like now, to be more transparent and try and build back some of that trust, perhaps in the way the city is spending the money.
So there was definitely a lot of questions about their spending, I think, in the weeks leading up to the election too, because the Statesman had run some pretty pointed stories, looking into how council offices were spending money. And I've seen some, like especially some of the council members who were highlighted in their reporting, they've been, you know, saying that they're going to give some of that money back or reimburse some of the costs too. So it does seem like affordability is on everyone's mind and also like transparency and being responsible with taxpayer money.
Yes, definitely, that's key. And I will say, city council recently passed, at a recent council meeting, was kind of a resolution that the city's audit and finance committee is going to work on new policies about council spending in their offices and bring that forward to the whole council to vote on, so to tighten up their policies around that. So that is something that now they seem to be addressing. And I think as far as council spending goes, I think there's two important things to note about it. One, it certainly, I think, hurts public trust, and it's not a good sign, right? And I think it makes the public angry and upset, and it's like, if you're going to ask us for money, you've got to tighten up your own ship. And that is true. Also, it is true that we will not find all the money we need to save us from our budget woes by like cutting some of these council spendings. Not that it's not important for the trust and that they should be behaving better, but it is not like we can just cut those out and we'll have no deficit anymore. So just a key thing to note.
No, I think that that's important, yeah. It's more of like an ethical, you know, like exercise at this point, like that people want to see more austerity. We have also seen the Prop Q opponents who are now circulating a petition to try to force an election that would audit city hall. They're basically trying to force this audit to happen by asking people to sign a petition.
Yes, so there's, so people who live in Austin now, you know, if you're a voter, you've probably familiar with these, right? You're able to-
You're tired of us, you're tired of hearing about all these petitions.
Yes, people are able to gather signatures and put something on the ballot, and then we all vote on it. This happens pretty regularly here. And so there is a petition gathering campaign happening now that just launched that would require the city to have an external and performance-based affordability and efficiency review, I think, every five years or in the year leading up to a tax rate election, if the city were to try another one. And that the city auditor has to choose an outside auditor to do this. Now, a few quick things around audits, because I think this is also a really confusing thing for people.
Yeah.
I think everyone believes an audit is a different thing. So just for clarity, we, the city of Austin does get, does already technically get audited every year. But this audit is done more for like fraud purposes, to weed out fraud, right? To make sure that like the city is spending the money in the way that they said they would spend it. So we do technically have an audit every year. The city gets pretty good grades on that audit. We also have an auditor's office, which is like an independent city department that leads investigations, and they make recommendations about basically how the city can operate better. So we already have that as a department, and they usually look into like very specific questions, like how are our city's composting and recycling education efforts going? Are they effective? Could we use better communication to get that message out more? Or they did one on like, how can APD improve its recruiting and hiring practices? So they look at these like very specific questions about usually around operations, like how can we operate better? So those are things that we're already doing. Then there's this idea that I think came up a lot, that has come up a few times, which is like this external kind of efficiency audit, which I think the idea behind this is more geared towards how can we find efficiencies in our city? Like looking at the entire city and seeing like, are there places where maybe we're duplicating spending efforts? Or things could be managed better to find savings? You know, Save Austin Now, and some people who were against Prop Q are pushing for this. Now, the tricky part is, one, this has already been tried once before and put before voters in 2018, and voters rejected it. Something very similar.
Really?
Yes.
Imagine this, your next podcast recorded in the same studio where you're hearing this right now. That's Trick Hat Workway. Trick Hat is Austin's most hospitality-driven coworking space. And yes, they've got a pro-level podcast studio designed for creators, teams and businesses who want high-quality recordings without the stress of hunting down space or gear. Just show up, plug in and hit record. Outside the studio, Trick Hat's got you covered. From private offices to dedicated desks, they offer flexible coworking options to fit any business or entrepreneur's needs. And can we talk about the perks? Freshly brewed coffee from Mañana, endless snacks and crispy Diet Cokes. But what really makes Trick Hat different is the energy. From weekly networking opportunities to community trick chats, it's more than a place to work. It's where Austin comes to connect, create and have fun doing it. Whether you're producing your next big idea or just need a space that feels good to work in, Trick Hat Workway is waiting for you, where it's always old Austin, new tricks. Visit trickhatworkway.com to learn more today. After a long day of holiday shopping at local markets, the first thing I want to do when I get home is curl up on my couch under my Cozy Earth Bubble Cuddle blanket. Y'all, this blanket has a distinctively textured bubble design and ultra-soft faux fur that gives luxury comfort and makes home the best place to be. Grab one for yourself and see, if you don't love it, you can return it with no hassle. But trust me, you are not going to want to return it. Plus, you get a 10-year warranty, because once you feel this level of comfort, you want it to last a decade. So head on over to cozyleth.com, use my code COZYAUSTIN for up to 20% off. And if you get a post-purchase survey, be sure to mention you heard about Cozy Earth right here. Give the gift of comfort that lasts beyond the holidays and carries into a cozy new year.
And also simultaneously to this petition thing happening, the city manager and the mayor are kind of moving forward with some version of what some people might call an efficiency audit. So the city manager put out a memo recently saying that he was starting this citywide efficiency study, and he was going to look at four areas. And in fairness, this is actually an effort that already had been started before this whole Prop Q conversation.
We've actually heard rumblings of this in city hall already. I think it came up in the interview that we did about the logo, that it wasn't just this graphic change, it was also kind of looking at the entire city and how can we make things more uniform among all of these different departments that are currently siloed?
I think that's a great point. You know, this is an idea that had been floated before Prop Q and honestly, didn't have a ton of traction at city hall. And then after Prop Q was rejected, council pretty quickly turned some support. Yeah, the idea here is a lot of the city departments, you know, in the city of Austin, a lot of the departments kind of operate as semi-independent agencies, right? They get to be in charge of, they have flexibility and can choose their own spending and do things like that within their budget. And so there's thought of like, okay, we might have a bunch of city departments who all have contracts with like one software vendor, but maybe we could bring them all together, negotiate a better price with that vendor, right?
Right.
Like a recent assessment found the city has nearly twice the number of IT staff of other cities. So like, maybe there's some reducing we can do here and kind of consolidating all of this into one centralized IT department. And so that seems to be pretty promising and non-controversial, and I think there could be some real savings there, which would be great. Other areas he's looking at is, again, this idea of other shared services and how they could be optimized. So within the city, there are certain departments like human resources, financial services, communications, that they kind of operate as like these little internal shops within the city, and they give out their services to the rest of the city. So it's like, how could we find efficiencies there, optimize that?
Yeah.
Social service contracting is another big one. This one is probably the most controversial one. So in the city, this is like another area the city manager is going to look at for efficiencies. Basically, a lot of our city's social services are contracted out. So we pass a budget, city departments contract out, usually with local nonprofit organizations who do some of this work, usually around homelessness, public health, things like that. That's normal, like a lot of cities do that, that's kind of how these things work.
It works, yeah.
How it works, but there have been questions raised about how are we managing these contracts? Are we really focusing on making sure that the contracts are focused on outcomes? And not just like how many people they serve, for example, right? So it's like, are we seeing positive results from this? And can we be more data-driven? Can we really focus on prioritizing funding, especially if we're going to have to make decisions in the future around, you know, we might have to cut some things?
Who gets funded, yeah.
Who gets funded? Let's focus on which programs are working best and for the most people, and focus on those. And also just being a little more strategic about which programs we fund. So the mayor's been saying this a lot lately, that Prop Q taught him that the city can't be all things to all people.
Right.
So some things we might have to leave to philanthropy is kind of the idea, right?
Right.
And the city can't be involved. And so what does the city feel like its role is in the social service network? And let's like target investments there. I will say, though, this is an area that I talked to council member Fuentes like two days about this. She agrees that there are outcome concerns, like that we want to be really vigilant, improvements can be made on outcomes. But I think she's weary that this could just mean, you know, one person's efficiency is another person's cut.
Yeah, so I guess the controversial or contentious part of it is just that people are connected to these, I mean, it's people's jobs. These contracts could, you know, make or break some of these organizations and kind of throw that service into question completely.
Totally, totally, yeah.
And also the people that it serves and who are getting whatever outcomes they are, even if they're not high enough.
Exactly, yeah. And some kind of social services cost more than others to serve individuals, right? Certain individuals need more care, so that is, right?
Yeah, that's going to be tough, some choices, yeah.
Yes, those are choices. And the last one is just looking at each department and kind of asking them to lead the way on evaluating, you know, where there are inefficiencies, duplication of services, that kind of things. Where could they, where could they cut? And the city managers already put out also an RFP, which is a request for proposals, to the public for a consultant to come in and help do some of this effort, an outside consultant. So, okay, so like, as far as like what's the difference between this and what is being pushed in the circulation? I mean, for the petition.
The petition.
That's a little unclear to me. It seems like the petitioners want an even more quote-unquote independent auditor to come in, like someone that the city manager doesn't even choose, but that the city auditor's office chooses. And I guess, you know, the petition, if it got to the ballot, would mandate this every so often, you know, make it required in our city's charter. So I guess that's the difference, but a lot of this-
I mean, the voters are kind of mandating it, though, you know?
Well, that's exactly what's happening now. I think that's a great point. The message, I think, got through in some way, right? Like that they, people did-
We love to see it, don't we?
You know, I'm sure some people obviously would have liked to see it earlier, but I think it did. It is clear that that's what forced them to start looking into this, so that's what's happening.
And we love to see the engagement, I think, in any, any way. I think it's just, it says a lot, the what, you know, the turnout and how people did vote. So turning now back to, you know, this budget that did get passed, what are some, a few things that people should really know about this budget? Maybe how it's different from other versions or last year's or whatever we should know?
Okay, so a few things that are part of this budget that are kind of different. So the parks maintenance budget, so a big part of Prop Q, if it had passed, was that it was going to add 60 new park maintenance employees to our parks department to help with this issue that we've been adding all this great parkland, but we haven't really kept up with the maintenance side. Prop Q did not pass, but the city manager was still able to get 15 new parks maintenance employees added. So there is still now this 24/7 EM cot, mental health response, that's something that was put in. Also, some money was put in towards EMS to prevent what's called brownouts at our stations. EMS has a really high vacancy rate right now. They're working on pulling that down, and they've had some progress, but they still have vacancies. And so what that can mean is that people over time have to fill those slots. And that means that EMS needs budget for that overtime. And also, as they're training new people, new people are not able to be effective like on the ambulance on day one, right? They need a bunch of training before they can really get into the system. And so we're having increased cost. And basically, what happens if you don't have enough people at a station on a certain day, the ambulances can't run. So that's called a brownout. Council was clear-
Have we had a lot of those?
We had some brownouts this spring.
Oh.
And so this has been an issue, and so council, this was one of the main directives, is that even if we have to make other cuts in other areas, we don't want brownouts at EMS. And so that is something that was put in this budget, increase funding for EMS to prevent brownouts. Now, there still seems like there are bigger questions down the line of how EMS can really get a handle on those vacancies. And I think that's something you'll see conversations about over the next year or so, but some money was set aside for that.
Okay.
In order to fund some of these things, some cuts had to be made. So what they did was a 10% across-the-board cut for existing social service contracts in three city departments, Austin Public Health, Economic Development and the Austin Municipal Court. That's nonprofit organizations that are receiving 10% less money than they had already been promised by the city. These are existing contracts, and they will have to figure out how to continue, you know, do more with less.
They might find local philanthropists to fill in the gaps, you know, fundraise, yeah.
Right, but we don't know. So that is like the big thing that they did there. And they also had to pull some money from our city's reserves, which was in the original city manager's proposal as well. This is something that we can do, that's what reserves are for, but you can't do it every year. Otherwise, we'll be in real trouble. So those are kind of like some of the, the top highlights, I guess, from this budget, the general.
I mean, I like the, I feel like the prioritization is on, you know, sort of immediate public, life and death kind of stuff. You know, the, having mental health emergency responders available to more people means those people don't have to interact with first responders who maybe aren't trained to interact with them properly or, you know, just gets them into the right places and the right hands. So, and I think EMS too, like people want to be able to call 911 and have somebody help their grandma who's having a heart attack or their, you know, so I think like those things are, they put, they put the money. I approve of this, these prioritizations personally.
There's been a lot of talk about core city services. And so like all the council members, you know, so many people have been saying like, we just need to focus on the core city services. Now, different people think of different-
What does that mean?
That's, that's exactly right. For certain people, I think those core city services are like police, fire, EMS and parks seems to still be pretty popular. As like, just do that, just provide the public safety and that. Other people, I think, you know, feel kind of that the opposite, or that public safety should not be police, fire, EMS necessarily, but EMS, social services, more preventative measures on the front end. There were some people that came to the council meeting that were really upset and saying, you know, we feel like all the money goes to, you know, police, fire, EMS, and then the social services have to like fight for scraps at the very end for our most needy residents, right? And so that's, I think, the struggle going forward, which is how do you keep the city affordable by not raising taxes that could force out those very people who need those services, while also not cutting the services that are helping those, right? So that's, that's the tension, I think.
The other thing that I heard during the election season was like, why are we building bridges over I-35 and expanding the airport and then the convention center? You know, some of these like big-ticket items, which I know that the money isn't always as clear, that like it's coming from the city. These projects get complicated with their funding. But it's also, I feel like this pull, push and pull between like planning for now versus planning for the future. Because some people think, you know, we need I-35 to be not a shit show that it is now. We need, we need a convention center because now ours is gone and it's a hole in the ground. And so we can't go back. So, you know, like, I don't know, did you hear much about those kinds of like planning for the future versus living for today kind of discussions?
Yeah, and I, I think a lot of this goes back to like trust. So because as the mayor pointed out many times, and like, you know, there were people that came up. I think it's these few things, it's like cap and stitches over I-35, the convention center, Project Connect. The mayor's laid out clearly, you know, what's in the general fund does not fund those things, right? Like, we could cut those things, we still basically have a very similar general fund. The money for them comes from other places. But what I heard a lot from the public that was talking about these is it still feels like a prioritization issue, a little bit of like, okay, but what are you really focusing on? And even if the cost is not coming from this budget, maybe it's taking people's individual time or attention away, or it's more just like a vibe, right?
Right, it's just being spindy, like, yeah.
And this feeling of like, what are you really focusing on or valuing? Which was one of the, I think, concerns that was really raised from the community. And it's complicated with all the funding structure, but I think that's the core of the message, is just this feeling of like, focusing on sometimes either future or now, or like visitors or residents or money, you know, big money versus residents. But of course, these opinions are, everyone has different opinions, but I think at the core of it is like a trust, still goes back to that trust thing.
Yeah.
Now, I, over the course of the next year, I think the hope is that looking at doing some of these efficiency studies, we can start to find some savings elsewhere outside of staff that might be able to help and might get us back on track. You know, when Houston did these kind of savings, that meant early retirement for some folks, some consolidation that, you know, our city's employee union has already raised some concerns, like what does that mean for us? And the city council has said, we are not trying to do efficiency studies to cut, you know, to cut jobs, but I think-
What does that mean then? How could you not?
Right, the union is worried, exactly. So I think a lot of this is going to, over the course of the next year, we'll see a lot of this as these efficiency studies come through, as we start to look at where we can save, and that's where I think the rubber will hit the road a bit more.
Yikes, I guess just like looking ahead, I'm curious about if you have any predictions for Austin in 2026 or best wishes for your fellow Austinites?
Yeah, I mean, I think- Yeah. I mean, I think to just pay attention to this, these budget processes. You know, I always say like, if you're going to do two things all year at the local level, like you should vote in the local elections and you should be involved in the city's budget process in some way. Because those are the two most impactful things, right? In elections, you pick our leaders or vote yes, no on policies. The budget's what decides everything else, basically. If there's no money, it won't happen. So, and city council, this is what budgets are really. You know, like I think for us in Austin, it feels very stressful and it's very difficult. But, you know, we have had years of very good fortune. You know, this is what a lot of times, this is how budget is supposed to be a lot of times. Like tough choices and conversations because you have a limited amount of money. For years, we, we just didn't feel like we had a limit, right? I think. And, and now, you know, the public is saying we have a limit. And I think trying to be involved as much as possible and signal to your council members what your true top priorities are and where you feel like the role of the city is. And I think that is what city council has to figure out too. I think one thing you saw out of council, you know, that I had not really heard in previous years is a lot of times they like to fund pilot programs, try out new programs, initiatives. That's great. But this year, they're final, they were like, can't do pilots. You know, we know we don't have money to continue them into the future. So like, we're not doing pilots right now. So you're starting, right?
This is not a startup mentality we need to have right now.
Right. So you're starting to see some of those shifts. But I think, yeah, just, just being engaged and making it really clear what your, your top priorities are and keeping an eye out for, I'm sure there will be surveys and public engagement opportunities for these things as they go, go on, because decisions will have to be made.
Yeah. Oof. Well, thank you so much for coming on and breaking it all down, chatting with me about it. Makes it a lot more easy to digest. So.
Yeah, happy to do it.
All right, Amy. We'll talk to you again soon. Thank you so much.
Bye.
Bye. That's all for today here on CityCast Austin. You can find links to Amy's work in our show notes. And if you enjoyed the show, please tell a friend, rate the show, leave us a review, and subscribe to our Hey Austin newsletter. We know you really love CityCast Austin, so help support it by becoming a neighbor today at membership.citycast.fm. We'll be back tomorrow morning with more news from around the city. Bye.